I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P M. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill two-five-sixty, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person in our council chambers as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. And because hybrid meetings are challenging, please be patient. Tonight, we will start the consent agenda. We'll start with the consent agenda, which includes approval of the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting minutes, approval of the February bank balances, budget report for periods ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, approval of the February check register, legal costs on projects, and department head monthly reports from March two thousand and twenty-two. Our regular meeting agenda includes item seven, which is fire and emergency services intergovernmental agreement, also referred to as an I G A. Item eight, which is awarding, to discuss awarding the contract for the Barclay Stormline project. Item nine is to consider awarding a sole source contract to Leeway Engineering Solutions to design and engineer projects one and two of the inflow infiltration, which is also referred to as I N I, study recommendations. Item ten is Resolution one-two-zero-eight, adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing Resolution one-two-zero-three by updating unified sports user reserved use fees. Item eleven is City of Gladstone pavement management program budget option priorities. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Present.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here. Thank you. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have nothing further. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? All right. Mindy, any questions or concerns? I'm still going to call everybody individually.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a question because something was paid twice, but then I realized that the dates were far enough apart that it was probably just a beginning and an ending payment. So I guess not. No.
Okay, thank you. Vanessa, Counselor Hartman, excuse me.
No questions.
Counselor Todd.
No questions.
Counselor Tracy.
No questions.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
Counselor Alexander.
I have none. Thanks.
All right. Would someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Some move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Todd and seconded in tandem by Counselors Hartman and Counselors Tracy. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Hi.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, consent agenda has passed. Next correspondence, it shows none. Do we have any correspondence?
Nothing additional. Thank you.
All right. So before I start, I'd like to, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for a public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decision. These start at the federal and state level, then they filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. So the first item is number seven, fire and emergency services intergovernmental agreement, again referred to as an I G A. And before we start this discussion, I would like to declare a conflict of interest. My husband works for the Gladstone Fire Department and is currently in one of the captain positions. Because this discussion includes those positions, I will recuse myself and Council President Garlington will chair this discussion and action.
Okay, so we're going to get started with item number seven. So you consider the approval of it in your government.
Sorry about that. We are going to get started with item number seven, considering the approval of an intergovernmental governmental agreement between the City of Gladstone and Clackamas Fire District Number One for all fire protection and emergency medical services. And before I hand it over to staff, I did not get a chance to look and see if there was anyone to speak about that. So about this particular item. So if there was, can you interject?
There's no one that requested to speak.
Okay, so I'm going to hand this over to Administrator Betts.
Thank you, Counselor Garlington. Good evening, City Council. Before I go over some key elements in the draft I G A, I'll have Chief Huffman say a few words. And I also want to reiterate who was on the city's negotiation team for this I G A. That was City Attorney Chad Jacobs, our finance consultant Kathy Brucker, our fire chief Rick Huffman, and myself for that. So Chief Huffman.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to start by just giving you some brief history of why we're here on this item tonight. Sustaining current service levels in Gladstone, in the Gladstone Fire Department and the ability to meet standards to cover objectives and the strategic plan was an adopted city council goal. In addition, was also highlighted in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three biennial budget message that the current structure of the fire service is not sustainable in the long term and staff will be exploring options to recommend to the city council. On September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, a council work session was held to discuss the challenges of providing fire and emergency services within the city and ended with a direction to enter into discussion with Clackamas Fire District One for a cost, excuse me, cost neutral contract for services. On February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, a follow-up special session was held to review the findings of this discussion. This session concluded with the city council providing direction to draft an intergovernmental agreement for consideration, and which is what we brought to you tonight. I'd like to make, to point out one item that might actually expand is we found an error in this draft I G A and we will amend that. And I believe there'll be a couple of those, Administrator Betts, is that?
Yeah, it actually is the VIN number, the vehicle identification number for the two thousand and twenty Pierce velocity, and that is in one of the appendices. But any of the Skripner's errors that we correct tonight will be fixed before there's any signatures that are placed on agreements.
Right.
Okay. So elected officials and members of the public have a copy of the draft agreement in their packet. However, I think that there are some key elements that we should call out for the public. So the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District One provides comprehensive emergency services to the City of Gladstone, including fire protection and emergency medical services. This will include a staffed fire engine with three firefighters, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, year-round in the Gladstone Fire Station. This also includes a paramedic on duty every day in Gladstone. Community involvement in key Gladstone organizations and events will continue to be a priority, as will citywide emergency management. The other key elements of this agreement include it will be for one year with two, two-year automatic renewals. The agreement can automatically renew for two consecutive two-year terms unless terminated by either party. The transition is proposed to occur on June first, two thousand and twenty-two, as the City of Gladstone no longer has the ability to maintain response capabilities due to staffing shortages. The city will retain ownership in the fire station located at five-five-five Portland Avenue. The city retains ownership of vehicles and apparatus as identified in Appendix B. The fire district will maintain them. Three full-time employees, including the fire chief and two captains, will transfer to the fire district and become full-time employees of the district as required per O R S two-three-six, six-oh-five, two-six-four-zero. There are some key elements in transferring the employees that we wanted to call out because we want to provide the reassurances that the city is making sure that the employees are taken care of. The fire district agrees to transfer the accommodating salary or hourly wage as of the date of transfer for twelve months. After the twelve months, the fire district will place the employee at the closest salary or hourly wage for the position as designated under the fire district's classification and salary schedule. Transferring employees shall retain the seniority they accrued while employed with the City of Gladstone. Transferring employees will have the option of transferring any accrued leave and unused sick leave and may retain accrued vacation up to ninety-six hours. Any remaining compensatory time or vacation can be liquidated and paid out to the employee upon transfer. The transferring employees will continue to participate in the same retirement system as the fire district, which is PERS. Transferring employees will receive health insurance and benefits, hours, conditions, and privileges as its other similarly classified employees at the fire district, subject to the same collective bargaining agreement. At the end of this agreement, transferring employees will have a right of return to the city if the employee desires, as long as the employee is in good standing at the termination of the agreement. Other key elements is if the city is unable to pay the fire district for the established levels of service or if the voters do not pass a local tax option measure, which is thirty-one cents per thousand, both parties agree to renegotiate the agreement in good faith. The Gladstone identity will be maintained on the fire station, on apparatus, and in promotional website, social media, and educational materials. Paid-on calls will be offered volunteer positions with Clackamas Fire, should they remain in good standing as determined by the Gladstone Fire Chief. This agreement recommends a joint oversight review committee, which will be comprised of two elected officials from the city, the city administrator or designee, two elected officials from the fire district, and the district's fire chief or designee to consider the services provided, policy development, budget development, and financial aspects of the agreement. It is recommended that the committee meet at least monthly for the first six months of the agreement and quarterly thereafter. So the options that we have is we currently have a memo of understanding with the professional firefighters of Clackamas County I A F F one-one-five-nine to allow for temporary full-time staffing by designated current paid-on-call firefighters to provide adequate staffing at the Gladstone Fire Department until May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Retaining the Gladstone Fire Department and meeting established response standards would impact the city budget with an unfunded amount of approximately one-point-two million annually to increase full-time staffing and pay for the associated costs. There are no affordable options that would provide the level of service of this I G A and meet the community standards for emergency response in Gladstone. If the city council approves this agreement, then the next step is for the Clackamas Fire Chief Brown to present it to Clackamas Fire District Number One Board for consideration on April eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two at five P M. The cost impact. Clackamas Fire District Number One was attentive to the City of Gladstone's direction for a cost-neutral contract and also acknowledged the benefits to the district. In order to provide a cost-neutral contract, the equity of the two thousand and twenty Pierce fire engine is factored over the life of the agreement. Therefore, the first I G A payment for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three that begins on July first is two million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars with calculations for future years based on assessed valuation growth for the city. This is within the approved two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget and is projected to be within future budgets. The gap cost for June first through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two is expected to be a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, and it is also included in the current budget. That completes my overview of the key elements in the I G A. You have the city attorney, the finance consultant, the fire chief, and myself here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So I'm going to open it up for discussion. And one of the things I'd like for people to do is when you're asking a question about something so that the rest of the council can follow along, if you will, just note where you are in the pages and then everybody can kind of cross out questions if they had the same one and/or move forward. So I'm going to start with Counselor Tracy.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Counselor Ripley.
I really don't have any questions, more just concerns and more kind of being blown away that we've let the fire department get to this point that we lose the fire department. This is going to be a blow to the city that we're not going to be able to recover from. You know, I started the fire department in January of ninety. The first thing that's told to me about the city was we have failing water lines. We have asbestos water pipes that are failing, cracking. We can't fill hydrants at the time. In thirty-two years, we haven't fixed one of them. That's awesome. Anything we do that's going to spend more money is a bad decision. All the information from the volunteer department has all been, there's been so much manipulation and lies in it. Nobody's ever tried to ask for the truth. I've tried to get data, yet I was unable to get data from the fire chief or the city administrator. After a year and a half, I got some partial data, but they said they couldn't find it, yet. They're telling us what the average response times is, so they have the data unless they're making up those numbers. This is a bad deal. This is taking something away from the community. It's taking opportunities away from younger people in our community. And having a three-person engine is ridiculous. When we used to roll three engines and a ladder truck and a rescue on a fire, now you get three people. This is, there's nothing good about this. But all the decisions we make is off of filtered information that we get. Nobody wants to look at the truth. Nobody wants to talk about the truth. We just want to serve personal agendas. So that's about all I have to say about this. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander.
I don't know. Mine was more of a budget or a fire department question. So I was just wondering, I was looking at the budget. Last year, we lost a captain, and this year we lost a captain, right? And we, so that's four positions. And we're having two captains cover four captains' job. And I just wonder how safe is that? And is that allowable? And can you speak to that?
Yes, Counselor. First off, no, it's not safe if we have too many consecutive work hours. I'm pretty mindful about the workload of our two captains. And we do have a paid-on-call person that's qualified that occasionally comes in to help, but he also has a full-time job. That is another reason we're trying to move forward with the depth of staffing that would be provided by Clackamas is that we didn't have that, and it would be very hard for us to have that. So it is a big concern as far as the gap there. We've been paying the overtime to maintain the coverage, so it's it's a balance between the coverage and their well-being. So, and I can tell you right now, I worry about that, and I make sure they take their time off. And if we have to, we minimum, go down the minimum staffing of two.
I know they need to be alert. That's why I just stopped when I was looking at that and the amount of overtime. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. Couple of questions on seven dash five, section two, letter F. It does say that to provide upkeep of the city's fire station and is responsible for any district caused damage. I was just curious why it was only for the tax lot located at five-five-five Portland Avenue and did not include the rented apartment and the leased office.
Thank you, Counselor. The leased office and the leased apartment are mentioned elsewhere in here. And the apartment will be kept until the remodel is completed for a week after, and the office will be kept through August.
Okay. No, I think I just want clarification as to why there's not any mention of like the district caused damage that they're responsible for that? Because it only mentions that the district is responsible for any district caused damage for the fire station and not the other occupied spaces.
Understood.
Okay. The other question I had was, how many paid-on calls or volunteer positions does this affect for us?
It would be all of them, and we have approximately eight left.
So eight people are going to lose their pay?
Their on-call positions, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think for me, it seems to make sense with the information that has been provided. It makes, it's difficult to remove eight positions. You know, and I hope that we can do whatever we can to help them find a replacement for that income. And that's, that's all I have.
Counselor Todd.
My, my only point was along the same as Counselor Hartman. I wasn't aware that we had some paid-on calls that, that this is their, their regular jobs. They're not working other jobs as well. Understand there's about six of them. Is there any accommodations through Clackamas Fire? Because I know that you guys are hiring two, preference points, that sort of thing to try and the people who've been doing it a long time. Do the, is there some sort of preference point, like a veterans' preference point in any hiring scenario? And are you currently hiring? Because I thought I saw it.
I think I can answer that. If I don't, Chief, you can hop in there. So the, all the positions, all the paid-on-call positions will be offered volunteer positions within Clackamas. They've had meetings with the chief and their volunteer coordinator over the last few weeks. That would include preference points for hiring in the full-time position. And so they would have to go through the same process as everybody else, but they would have those points that would give them an edge on everybody else. So anybody seeking full-time employment would really benefit from that. Those who just want to serve in the fire service would still benefit from being a volunteer.
Right, because, but that's not paid-on-call. It's strictly volunteer, or is there some sort of stipend? Yeah.
There are some benefits that the district offers with education and some other small items, but it really is about service or preparation for full-time work.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to have a lot of questions, clearly. The building across the street that we currently lease, are there any tenant improvement cost balances should the county decide not to keep the building? Leftover costs?
No, Arlisa has no tenant improvements that we're responsible for, and so the answer is no.
Okay. Our fire chief position, your position, is that a do you sit on the same payroll as the rest of the the fire district agreement that they have with the local? Or do you have a different pay? Pay way to get paid and you're can, this paperwork is considering you an employee, but I'm just wondering how that's working. Does the fire district over at Clackamas have room for an additional fire chief? How is that working?
It would not be for a fire chief. I would go over in the same conditions as the other employees at the same pay. And they would have a position, I was told, on command staff, but I have not asked for any details on that.
Okay. On bullet point number two on page seven-two, or not bullet point, the ones that are, the second one down, it doesn't say there that they would, it just says that they would be the salary or wage would be closest. Can we ask that it not be lower? I mean, not lower than, is that a problem?
The state statute stipulates that it can't be.
Okay, good to know. On the, about the six one down, it says transferring employees. Can we make mention that the collective bargaining agreement that we're discussing? Can we like put the information to the specific collective bargaining agreement we're using? Do you have that number?
I'm not understanding the question. I'm sorry.
So it says that district subject to the same collective bargaining agreement. Is there a title to that agreement? Is there?
Where are you referencing?
Oh, I'm sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six item down in the center.
Okay, the staff report is not part of the I G A. So we can certainly amend the staff report to reflect that, but it's not in the actual I G A.
Okay. Then along the same lines with Counselor Todd, I want to make sure that our volunteer, our on-call people, that they don't get dropped through the, you know, the grate here, that, that, that they, I don't know, do they get to collect unemployment? Should they not move over? I think that we need to be really transparent on what is going to happen and not just roll them under a rug. I know, I know that they will be considered. I've heard that said, and I get that. But what if they're not? I mean, do they get to collect that employment? Are they out of luck with any insurance? Do they get insurance right now? Isn't that terrible that I'm asking that now? Shouldn't I know that? I feel bad. I apologize.
As on-call, on-call employees, their hours typically have not included enough hours to meet the requirements of the A C A. The memorandum of understanding that we have with the union right now is to use them to keep our staffing up for twenty-four-seven response. So their hours have gone up, but that's not the, the pay position that that job usually has. That's a temporary agreement.
Okay. So I guess my question would be, is, so now you're going to take them and you're going to move them into what they consider a volunteer position, although most volunteer positions are paid a stipend of some sort. Is Clackamas Fire's volunteer position paid in any way?
I can only reflect what we heard at the meetings, and they actually get the benefits of the education and, and the service. I really can't recall if there's any stipend, but oh, that's right, I'm sorry, Lo Sap is a state system that they can be part of for retirement. Yep. So federal mileage and for drills and shifts. And so, you know, those are the, those are typical on-call reimbursements that are allowed under F L S A, I believe.
But there's not a living, are they making a living wage right now? Like I said, I'm just wanting
The position is not intended as a living wage.
Okay.
We're using them in a temporary position right now, and so they have been making more money, but that is not the design of that position. That's the gap filler for right now.
Okay, thank you for that information. Then, okay, so then we talked about once, just bear with me for a second. Okay, so I had brought up the fact, I sent a note to the city and asked about, because there was some clarification I needed on the vehicle, on the vehicles that the city owns. And when I read all of this, I thought, well, they must be giving up this Ford Explorer. And that's not the case. So if anybody didn't read this very clearly, I want you to understand very clearly. Part of this agreement is that the big new fire station, the big new fire truck is going to Clackamas Fire. It will be, what's the word, amortized? Is that the word I'm looking for? Over a five, say that again, sorry. An accelerated depreciation over the next five years. Should we choose not to use, do this agreement as the automatic renewals come up, thank you very much, then we, yes, we would be buying that truck back for the cost that it Renewals come up, thank you very much, then we, yes, we would be buying that truck back for the cost that it. Was worth at that time, whether it be year one, year two, years four, year five. If we walk away after the fifth year. Gladstone comes back to using what is now a 2014 fire engine. So I just want to make sure that everybody on this council understands those points. And. Gladstone will have a festival, we will have a fire truck, we will have some new people in our building that. I hope they would call Gladstone home. I have. Reached out to. People who are walking by my house and other people down at parks, and honestly, their number one concern is that when they call 911. That somebody answers. So, I'm sorry, this is just, this is a hard one for me, and I understand that we all deserve emergency care. But there's a building on Portland Avenue that my kids were in kindergarten or first grade, second grade, and they went to see it and they had their picture taken. And I don't want any child in Gladstone not to be able to do that, but I also don't want anybody to have to call 911 for a family member and not have it answered. So. That's where I'm at with that. So. I'm gonna ask each one of the counselors again if they have, oh, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. So I would, our finance director is here, and I would like to ask her to explain to all of you and the council. What I learned about Clackamas's $2.40 and Gladstone's. $1.70 some cents plus our 31 cents, and I'll leave that to you, Kathy, thank you.
Presented to the council at that 9/28/21 meeting when we originally discussed this. I had done an analysis on that time based on our budget for fiscal year '22, '23, and '24. And in comparison to what CCFD assesses the, you know, out on the. In their district to other residents is $2.2.4012 per thousand is what they pay. Our share of the general fund budget and the levy that is devoted to fire services currently sits at $2.2.0163. So there is a gap there obviously of almost 40 cents per thousand. That is the use of the fire truck. Value, and that's why we are applying that fire truck with the accelerated depreciation over there. In order to make this a cost neutral contract. So it's very much a, it's a transfer of a tangible asset versus cash, but the same type of thing.
Thank you for explaining that. So I'm gonna go through our council. Is there anybody that needs to make any other clarifications or comments about what we've talked about? I'm sorry, Administrator Betts, our legal team?
I think we're fine.
You're okay? So I'm gonna go through our council one more time so that if they had another thought or a question. On top of what people have already started talking about, I want to make sure that. Everybody's really clear about what they're voting on and, and although I know, if you feel like me, this is just making your heart palpitate a little bit, a lot a bit. That you ask the questions that need to be clarified. So, Counselor Todd.
No, the, the accelerated depreciation, thank you, that was going to be my question, so. I appreciate this. I don't have any more questions. I feel like I've talked to a lot of people and. I just, that this isn't, this isn't fun. I say that a lot, this isn't fun. But I appreciate everything that our fire department has done for us. And I appreciate the staff working really hard on this as well, that's, so I have no questions.
Thank you. Counselor Hartman?
I have no further questions, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Tracy?
No questions this time.
Counselor Alexander?
I just, it's, it's hard, like you say, they've been here. I lost my mom last year. I want to make sure if that call ever goes out to anyone again, that we have a paramount, we have the people we need right there to take care of the situation. And not people that have been working for extra shifts and so forth. We need people to be alert and, and serve our citizens. That's what we need, so I know what I vote for.
Okay. Counselor Ripley?
I think my only last thought is gonna be, I think it's kind of funny that. I know, Ricky, you said that we've had some discussions about the fire department, but we really, we've had a couple of presentations, but we've never actually sat down as a council and talked about anything. And then the other thing I think is kind of funny is, this negotiation team. That we talked with Clackamas on some contracts, why didn't it include any residents from Gladstone, elected, paid, employed? Everybody involved in that group. Has never paid taxes in Gladstone. I think that's. The setup for failure here has been going on for quite a while. So I'll leave it at that. I have my opinion, but. We'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So what we've come up to now is. On page 724, no, I was wrong. We need to vote on. 7/3, thank you for coming back. Would someone like to make a motion to? On the IGA?
I'll make the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for Fire and Emergency Services.
And a second?
I'll second it.
And I believe now we need a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Aye.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
No.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Okay, so that.
If, if I could.
Apologize, yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. In, in addition to that, now that you have approved that, is there any interest in appointing? The two elected officials to the Joint Oversight Review Committee?
I would like to throw my name in that bowl.
Okay, and Counselor Alexander is the fire liaison, so Counselor Garlington and Counselor Alexander. Are we good with that?
Do we need to have a vote or just a, a head nod is fine?
A consensus is fine, yes. All right, thank you.
So I am going to pass this back to Mayor Stempel and I'm sorry you didn't get in on that discussion.
Thank you very much for handling that, Mindy did great. All right, next is item number eight, which is to consider awarding a contract to Jim Smith Excavating in the amount of $427,724 for the Barclay Stormline Project staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give our Public Works Director, Cana Peroli, just a moment to get situated, and then he will. Go through the staff report, and I believe that we have a visual to show where this project location is as well.
All right, thank you, Jackie. The Barclay Storm Project was identified in the city's 2020 work plan, or 2022 work plan. The project will install 400 feet of storm line to connect the existing storm line on Watts to Portland Avenue. This will help alleviate water backups on, stormwater backups on Watts Street that come from the. Wetland area on Glen Echo Avenue. As part of this project, the city will also reconstruct the entire section of roadway. From Watts to Portland Avenue. We, we will replace two ADA ramps at Barclay and Portland Avenue. That will bring the intersection into current compliance with American Disabilities Act standards. The cost impacts, the conclusion of the bid process produced three bids which were deemed responsive bidders with a low bid. Being submitted in the amount of $427,724. Responsible contracting practice suggests that the contract be written with a 10% contingency for a total amount to be awarded. Of $470,496.40. Mobilization and preparation charges of. $49,172 will be divided equally between the stormwater funds, stormwater improvements of. Of $123,752 and street improvements of $251,800 will each be funded by the respective funds. Options, option one, approve the, approve the award of bid to Jim Smith Excavating for. The bid plus contingency in the amount not to exceed $470,496.40. Option two, do not approve the award of bid to Jim Smith Excavating. Staff recommends accepting the award of bid to Jim Smith Excavating.
Sorry, want to make a correction that the contract is for $470,496.40, which includes the 10% contingency.
That is correct.
Okay. Will this alleviate some of the flooding problem that's coming off of the bio swale or rain garden, whatever you want to call it at the high school? Because I think this is where it feeds to, is that pipe.
This, this will help alleviate, there's a storm line that runs back behind the. Grandstands at the high school there. That line actually is sloped the wrong way. And so it, it's actually flowing back toward Barclay.
Oh.
This will help alleviate that by moving stormwater to Barclay, or to Portland Avenue.
Okay, thank you. All right, Counselor Garlington, questions or concerns?
Well, I didn't until you said something about that storm line, so is that the city's responsibility or is that the school's responsibility and is that going to be fixed?
That is the city's responsibility and eventually it will be fixed.
Eventually.
We got a lot out there.
Good to know. Okay, pass.
All right, Counselor Hartman? I just had a question about the ADA ramps, is the, are those the two that are included in the 10 that we got funding for already? Or these are additional?
These are additional, yes.
Okay, that was all, thank you.
Counselor Todd? I know that it's in the contract, but just for sake of anybody listening, when, if we accepted this contract, would it start and how long could people expect? Their roads torn up and such?
Well, once, if this passes through council tonight, we'll put the contract to Jim Smith. The plan will be to get a pre-construction meeting started as soon as possible to get the projects going as quickly as possible. As possible, as far as a deadline in the contract, it actually has the stipulations on it. I don't unfortunately have that with me. But I want to say it was end of July or toward the end of July for substantial completion for this project.
Yeah, I'll just let you, it's July 25th for substantial and final completion, August 25th. I was just sort of more wondering, it is close to the school, it is going to, you know, if it goes longer. If it goes longer, that could be, you know, something that people would want to plan for, and I do know that people. They want these repairs, but you really don't also want your street sort of, you know, not being able to park there. It's a double-edged sword, so.
Yeah, we have one application for an event and that's the high school graduation and they want Barclay, so we'll work with the contractor and the school to make sure that that happens for graduation.
Okay, Counselor Tracy?
Thank you. So Director, we're, we're confident in the 10% contingency. I know that I'm, I'm managing some pretty big projects right now. We've had a couple of hits. Obviously, supply chain issues, but we've seen some contingencies go up, you know, way above our, our prescribed contingency, but you're comfortable with this? Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I am. So the engineer estimate was fairly close to this. That engineer estimate was including. The current pipe costs and the current, you know, the volatile market all the way across the board. So, and this came in a little bit higher than what that engineered estimate was, and I feel that 10% should be more than sufficient to be able to, to finish this project.
Okay, and I, I didn't look through the contract in its entirety, but I'm sure that if we do have some supply chain issues, we'll be able to work that out with the contractor, is that correct? And it's probably language there embedded in the contract?
Yeah, that will be handled through the contract. When, last I spoke with the contractor, they had said that they had already secured the pipe, so that should not be an issue.
Okay, perfect, that's, those are the answers I needed, thank you.
Counselor Ripley?
No questions?
Counselor Alexander?
No, thanks, I got them all answered right there. Good question.
All right, anything additional from staff? Nope, well then, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract to Jim Smith Excavating.
I move that the city of Gladstone, that the city of Gladstone City Council. Affirm that proper public works, is that the right one? On page eight two?
Eight two, yeah.
I'll start over. I move that the city of Gladstone City Council affirmed that proper public works bidding processes were followed in the bidding of this project. And that the city administrator will be authorized, excuse me, to sign. A contract with Jim Smith Excavating in the amount of $470,470,496.40 for the Barclay Storm Line project.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Alexander, excuse me, by Counselor Garlington, seconded by Counselor Alexander. Do we have any further questions? I don't see anything, but I do have one quick question, only because contracts haven't gone so well in the past, you're very confident that this is a reputable firm and that they will be able to get this done on time, on budget?
I am, they have done several projects in the city prior to this, which was prior to me coming here, and I've heard nothing but good, good reviews from them, so.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, motion has passed, thank you. Next is item number nine, to consider approval of a sole source contract with Leeway Engineering Solutions. The amount of $531,202.10 designed and engineered projects one and two of the inflow and infiltration, again, INI, study recommendations, staff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a significant project that we're moving forward to the next phase. It will help us identify and engineer our infrastructure so that we can start constructing and fixing some of our issues. So I'm gonna have our Public Works Director go over some highlights in the staff report.
Thank you, Jackie. The city of Gladstone has a longstanding history. Of Department Environmental Quality or DEQ violations pertaining to raw sewage overflowing into the Clackamas River. Violations that are a result of stormwater inflow and infiltration, or INI, into the city's sewer collection system. DEQ has worked with the city of Gladstone to follow, to allow us time to correct these deficiencies. In spring of 2019, City Council authorized staff to enter into mutual agreement and order. With the state of Oregon to settle DEQ violations. The city has worked diligently to meet obligations with DEQ design. And of the repair work, the repair work from the findings of the INI study is the next step. Repair work which needs to be completed by January of 2024. Leeway Engineering performed the fieldwork which identified widespread INI throughout the city. Leeway's knowledge base and familiarity with, with our storm and sewer systems provides them with a unique. Understanding of issues that need to be addressed. City staff believes that contracting with Leeway Engineering to design the next phases of this project will only benefit the city. In preparation for this upcoming project, the city submitted a, a proposal for consideration with West for the regional INI reimbursement program. On April 5th, the city received notification of our approval. The city of Gladstone is now eligible, eligible to receive up to 33% reimbursement of the total cost of the city's INI project. Option one, proceed with seeking a sole source contract with Leeway Engineering for design. Option one, proceed with seeking a sole source contract with Leeway Engineering for design and construction support of the I N I reduction project phases one and two. Option two, do not approve proceeding the to seek a sole source contract with Leeway Engineering and for design and construction support of the I N I project phases one and two. Option three, proceed with an RFP for design and construction support of the I N I reduction project phases one and two. The cost, cost impact of a sole source contract with Leeway Engineering would be five hundred and thirty one thousand, two hundred and two dollars and ten cents. This amount does include a ten percent contingency, though after though after a reimbursement program funds the city's portion after reimbursement program funds, the city's portion of the project would be three hundred and fifty five thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and forty one cents. Staff recommends city council proceeds in seeking a sole source contract with Leeway Engineering for design and construction support of the I N I reduction project phases one and two.
So clarification, so previously, the thirty three percent reimbursement from Wes was only for the actual boots on the ground work, but we were able to get them to cover thirty three percent of the engineering as well?
So the the thirty three percent is part of the IGA that we took back, I'm not sure on the exact date, a couple, couple of months ago, that IGA covers anything that has to do with I N I reduction.
Okay, so including the engineering and design.
That is correct. And once we move to the construction phase, we'll have to resubmit to Wes at that time, but it will also cover thirty three percent of all of those costs, as long as it meets the criteria of I N I reduction.
And I think it's really important to share that the last five years, the utility rate increases that the city council has supported. This is what that money is going towards, is to get this work done so that we can start fixing our infrastructure. And there is a benefit to the city to use Leeway Engineering because they did the previous work for us. We have momentum, we're several months ahead of our DEQ deadlines, and we want to keep it that way.
All right, so questions, Council Garland.
I have no questions.
Council Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted a clarifying question for nine dash five in the compensation. I just want to clarify that that four eighty two, nine eleven, then plus the ten percent contingency is the five thirty one. Just just to clarify.
That is correct.
Okay, cool. The other question I have for Attorney Jacobs, do I need to recuse myself because my street is included in this project?
Council Hartman, members of council, Chad Jacobs from the State Attorney's Office. No, you don't have to recuse yourself. What I would do is declare a potential conflict of interest and for the reasons you just stated. And the difference is, is that, you know, in order to have an actual conflict, you have to have a financial interest that would be affected. Where a potential conflict is just something that could be affected. So your property values could be affected. We don't know if it would be, so therefore a potential conflict would be adequate.
Okay, do I do that now or when we vote?
You should do it now.
Just to declare a, what did you say?
A potential conflict of interest because your own property adjacent to the street.
Is that the full council?
I know the whole.
I know, I think that's me too.
It's not me.
It's not you. Okay, so for the record, just declare a, why am I forgetting? Potential conflict of interest because it's my street is on this project. That's all.
All right, Council Todd.
I will declare a potential conflict, conflict of interest because I believe my business and rental property is on there. But besides that, I don't have any questions. So thank you.
Okay, Council Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is that we're doing a sole source on this, correct? And so I'm not really that familiar with our procurement policies here at the city. This is a fairly large sole source contract. So can we speak on that matter, please?
Absolutely. Again, Council Tracy, members of the council, Chad Jacobs again. When you adopted your public contracting rules a couple of years ago, you have very specific provisions in here to allow you to do a sole source contract with an entity that you've previously done work on for a project, such as engineers or architects or people of that nature who have a background in the project that you're working on. And the idea behind that is that there's cost savings for the city in continuing to work with that same organization or group. And so that's what we're doing here.
Okay, so very much appreciated. I think this is a reminder to us, though, that we also two or three years ago, we're talking about another engineering firm and somebody at the time during our council meetings, we were talking about the fact that we had constantly had sole source agreements with that engineering firm. So I I appreciate you explaining that, Chad, and just want it out there so for the so the public understands what we're doing.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this would be on a project by project basis. Just because you work with someone on a different project doesn't mean you can sole source them on a completely different project.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And the benefit to Gladstone is we have thirty years of catch up on projects to do. This allows us to keep moving forward with the momentum so that we don't have to go through the regular city procurement process.
Okay, thank you. No, no further question.
Council Ripley.
I have no questions.
Council Alexander.
Just I guess, so we have an advantage using the people that did it before. Now, in the future, would we seek them first for to do the work?
Well, I'll certainly defer to staff. Generally, no, we can prefer to defer to them for this project, so the I N I project. And we may look to them if there's the same sort of advantages to the city to do that. But for other projects, we just go through our normal RFP process and open it up to the general public. Thank you.
All right. May I write my note real quick? All right, I don't have any questions, so I would entertain a motion to award the contract to Leeway Engineering.
I would move that we.
Council Hartman has one more question. One more question. I just am curious what the effect on residents will be. So, you know, as we increase our infrastructure, will there be future expectations for homeowners to also be responsible for increasing theirs? Or will we have like a moratorium, like you have ten years to fix your eighty year old pipes? I'm just curious how that works. I only ask that just because my neighbor across the street is going through this in this exact moment. And the folks who fixed their systems mentioned that one of the cities does do that. And I'm just curious if that's ever been thought about.
So one of the things I believe, Darren, is it June that we're going to come back with an RFP to go out and actually hire a contract to fix some of the issues. The engineering and design is going to do that work first. But in June, we're going to come back and talk to you about some options to use ARPA money to help with those private development fixes that may need to be done in Gladstone. So there'll be a holistic approach to that when we go out to bid for the contract in June that we'll be discussing that cities use different kinds of mechanisms to entice property owners to do that. But we believe that the use of ARPA funds that Gladstone received might be a better use for not only the city, the public, but for the private to try to fix it more quickly for them. So stay tuned. We've got some good ideas to bring to you in June for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, so I would entertain a motion.
I move we proceed with seeking a sole source contract with Leeway Engineering for design and construction support of the I N I reduction project phase one and two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Council Alexander, seconded by Council Garland. Do we have any further questions, concerns? I don't see any hands. So Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Council Todd.
Yes.
Council Hartman.
I.
Council Tracy.
Hi.
Council Alexander.
Yes.
Council Ripley.
Yes.
Council Garland.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, motion is passed. Next is item number ten, to consider approving resolution one two zero eight, which is a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing resolution one two zero three by updating the Unified Sports User Reserved Fee, Reserve Use Fees, staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your staff report, you will see that we go back to September of twenty seventeen. And the Public Works Director isn't going to go through and read all of those dates, but the point is to make sure that everyone's aware. This has been a very well thought out, vetted process that we have been trying to come to a resolution on. So Public Works Director, Cana Peroli, is going to take you from the last work session that we had in regards to what the Unified Sports User Group recommended and talk about what we're asking you to approve tonight.
Thank you, Jackie. In at the last work session, there was discussion about the Unified Sports User Group. The Unified Sports User Group, which included Counselor Greg Alexander, Counselor Vanessa Hartman, Counselor Tracy Todd, Parks Board Rec, Parks and Rec Board Member Stephanie Phipps and Park and Rec Board Member Nancy Turner. City staff, baseball, softball, soccer, pickleball was convened. We also included representation from the children's course. Productive meetings have been allowed through discussion on the on the matter of user fees and resolution to the parking concerns for field user groups at Meldron Bar Park. It was a consensus that the user groups will provide city staff with seasonal rosters. The city will will charge fees in accordance with the attached fee schedule. Fees will be charged on a two season per year schedule. Rostered players will only will only pay one fee per year. The city will provide a designated parking area at Meldron Bar Park, which is outlined in the attached document, Exhibit B. Additionally, when requested by the children's course, we will provide placards to parents waiting to pick up their their kids from golf lessons. Based on the estimated registration numbers and tournaments for the Gladstone user adopted the master fee schedule could possibly generate thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars a year. A flat fee based on registered players greatly reduces the amount of staff time that will be spent on tracking practices and games, this being an overall benefit for the city. The proposed master fee schedule for reserve used fees is comparable to surrounding cities. This provides non-resident teams as well as our resident non-residents and option of reserving fields and courts for organized play and group events. Option one, adopt the master fee schedule as proposed. Option two, adopt the master fee schedule as proposed and require visiting teams outside the city limit limits to pay for parking. Option three, do not do not adopt the master fee schedule and decide on a different approach. Since twenty seventeen, the city of Gladstone has been tasked with researching new revenues, new options, maintaining and enhancing our park system. Participants of the Unified Sports Group agree that this is a way to put a fair and equitable fee in place for reserved use of city owned fields and courts. The city acknowledges that the fee will not offset the substantial maintenance costs associated with the fields and courts, but feel recovering a portion of this cost is financially responsible.
All right, thank you. Council Garland, questions or concerns?
Oh, of course. So first of all, I come from the background of the Parks Board. I was part of that task force that was tasked to find additional funding for capital projects. That was the discussion. So let's make that all very clear. That's what we were going after money for. We felt that, I'm just going to add, the city already budgets in the Parks Department for maintenance. What we were looking for was to get new covered places for kids to have their birthday parties, to have additional benches along walkways, to have walkways that are ADA compliant, that you can take your, even a person pushing a stroller can't get down generally a gravel path. You got you've got to have a fairly smooth path. Well, none of that happens on the parks maintenance money. That has to come from capital improvements. That's what we were tasked to find. So in saying that, I would also like to add that in the last couple of weeks, I've taken it upon myself to be out on the sidewalk, talking to people I don't know. I know that seems like it might be easy for me, but it's not. So I talked to people who were out in their yard, lucky them, I just stopped and asked them, and I asked this question. If we no longer charged for parking for all of these sports teams, would you be willing to add money onto your tax bill in order to cover that? And it was a resounding no. No. So I'm just going to say that there are times that I would really like to just go with my own, you know, heartfelt feeling and let everybody park for free and play for free and all of that. But the people that I talked to said, no. So I am not I'm not in a position at this time to be able to offer up parking, but I appreciate all the work that everybody did on the master fee schedule. Oh, and then when you said that there was a two, two, like if you played spring ball and fall ball, you only had to pay once, but you had to pay at least once.
That is correct.
Thank you for the clarification. That's all.
Okay, Council Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. Just wanted to say thank you for putting together the amount of meetings that we had. It was a really constructive conversation. I think leading into it, we were all a little nervous bringing all of the groups together. But I think everyone felt heard, and I think everyone had the opportunity to share what their thoughts are, and it seemed that this was the best to come to the middle. So I just wanted to say thanks for taking that time for us to have that community engagement piece.
Council Todd. I will agree with you, Council Hartman. It was very robust conversation. Many, I mean, very well represented represented by all of the sports presidents and such. What it really came down to is what what I heard and what I understood was they really didn't care about the per player fee. That was one thing that they they were fine. It was having to tell visiting teams that you had to, that was the one thing that they really cared about. And I think it's a, it's good, it's as much coming to the middle as we can, right? So there will be special parking, which wasn't really explained that well in the staff report. That'll be parking, that will have a little sign up that you can drive. You don't have to stop at the machine. You don't have, you can just move on through. And then that gives our police department, if there's patrolling down there, a way to sort of watch one specific area. It was the best compromise, and I think everybody was happy with it at the end. We'll just be slow going on capital improvements, but that's it. Thank you.
Council Tracy.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thanks.
Council Ripley.
No questions.
Council Alexander.
All right, now, just just to let you know, I went out too, and I talked to about eight different cities. And this is, this is a good deal for our city. They're getting a good deal. And and the parking, I just on on page ten dash six and ten dash seven, everything in yellow is the the fee scheduled, master fee scheduled as proposed, or just the non-resident visiting sports teams?
Everything highlighted in yellow is what's being changed and is what was agreed upon by the Unified User Sports Groups.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good deal for everybody. Thanks.
All right, my question is, have we figured out how much we're going to lose in parking fees?
We don't think that there's a way to estimate that revenue.
Okay, no. So we're going to make fifteen thousand, but we may, we have no idea how much we're going to lose. So it could just be a wash. I was part of the discussions that the Parks Board spent a couple of years trying to figure out ways to fund our parks. Our parks are our biggest draw. We really don't have much else. And people were very, very adamant about the fact that with eighty percent of the people using our parks not living in Gladstone that and not paying taxes, that they should help shoulder the costs. So I just want to make sure that we look at what that original mission was and vision for the Parks Board. What they came up with, it wasn't easy to come up with parking fees. We had to hire a consultant to help us figure that out. They did a lot of outreach, so I just want to make sure that we don't lose the need to find a funding source for our parks. Yes, Council Alexander.
Well, the funding, I don't, it's just free parking. And all the cities I talked to, not one other city charges you to come watch your kid play a game. So the parking, you just had to give them that. That had to be, they're paying the user fees and everything. You just can't, you can't charge them to park. No other city does that. As a matter of fact. As a matter of fact, what was interesting to find out, when I talked to Camby, they get to practice at all their schools and play their games at their schools.
At the schools.
So it, you know, and we don't have that option. So it was just, this is a great deal for everybody, really.
All right. Any other?
One more.
Yes.
So in looking at this picture here, I don't know if any of you took a look at the parks, Meldron Bar Park site.
Site plan.
About. Okay, so what are we gonna do if that gets developed and that spot's no longer there? Are we gonna have to mow down a bunch of trees in order to provide parking? I, I'm, I, okay, I did sound a little snarky, but I mean it sincerely.
Yeah, and this is intended to be a pilot project to see if this works for this next first year. The Meldron Bar Park site plan will probably come to you in August for consideration. The likelihood of a project being developed right away there is several years out. But your point is well-taken. We are gonna watch it for this first year to make sure that's even an appropriate place to designate for the free parking.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions? All right. Well, then I would entertain a motion to approve the master fee schedule.
I'll make the motion to adopt the master fee schedule as proposed.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Hartman. Do we have any further discussion?
Can, can I interject that it's actually a resolution? So let's go ahead and read the title on ten dash four. Counselor Alexander can read the title of the resolution number twelve oh eight. Thank you. Want to do a second?
Motion was again made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Hartman. Do we have, have any further questions or concerns? You can, you can tell that we're all aging because we all are taking our glasses on and off. We all have our, our readers here. All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
I.
Counselor Tracy.
I.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stumpel.
Yes, resolution has passed. Next is item number eleven, which is the City of Gladstone Pavement Management Program Budget Option Priorities. Staff is going to present the pavement strategy priorities, and we will direct them which way we want them to go. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't know if you've noticed a theme here tonight, but we hired a Public Works Director that wants to get some projects done. And that's where we are. We had a work session to talk about this last October, and so Darren is gonna talk you through how he came up with the four groups to identify. Please keep in mind that the city has about nine hundred thousand dollars, and the focus is to be on getting as many residential streets paved that we can with that money. So with that, Darren, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Jackie. As City Administrator Betts referred to the work session back in October of last year, where we presented the pavement management program to, to City Council for discussion. Just a brief summary of that, we wanted to spend up to a million dollars on, out of the Roads and Streets Fund, get done what we can get done with the available funding and focus on residential streets. After paving is complete with the available funding, get the pavement condition index rerated. City Council adopt a PCI after it is rerated. City Council decide on new revenues for roads and street maintenance. Also during the work session, there were a few items that were requested to bring forward to the next meeting. Expenditures on paving of streets since twenty seventeen, that's attachment one. A list of what has been completed since twenty seventeen, that is attachment two. A larger version of the PCI con, conditions map, which is appendix number three. Staff has per, has prepared a list of prioritized projects based off of cost and location. These projects have streets that were called out in the five-year plan in the pavement management program. These are listed in black on the itemized street list and other streets that were in the same general area that have similar PCI ratings. Those are the ones that are red on the street list. Location is essential with, with these projects, so there is a cost, so there is cost efficiencies on mobilization fees. Therefore, streets have also been grouped together by location to maximize available resources. The potential options, which are project A, B, C, and D. Depending on which option is chosen, the, will determine the cost. However, staff feels comfortable spending up to nine hundred thousand dollars on paving projects. This would leave the city a small reserve for contingency and other project. Staff recommends to develop, or, sorry, all recommendation group projects need to be complete. However, the city does not have the necessary financial resources. Staff does not have a preference in which group is completed. We just recommend moving forward, forward before costs continue to escalate.
All right. Excuse me. One approach that we gave the City Council a homework assignment is if you just look at the four different project proposals and rank them one through four, and the city recorder will put up a spreadsheet to see if we can come to a consensus on the number one group that we need to move forward with.
Okay, perfect. Are you set up to bring that, bring that up? Okay, well, then I'll call you by number here. Counselor Ripley, yes.
If there's that conflict of interest possibility on these.
Potential conflict.
Yeah, I might be part of that on this, depending upon which people choose.
Yeah, I meet, me too, but I'm not gonna choose mine. But, oh, well. Okay, Counselor Ripley, do you have them?
C, D, A, B.
Where'd they go? So he said C, D, A, B?
Yes.
Okay. I'll try to do this on paper. Okay, C was number one. C, D. A, B. Okay, Counselor Alexander.
Yeah, that's the same one I had. Project C for one, project D for two, project A for three, and project B for four. Looks like we get the most thing for a buck out of that, that order. But the other question I had, I asked, I can't remember, what, what are the, the streets in red?
Those are streets that we added to the existing streets that were in the pavement management program to be able to get a sizable project, to be able to get to the dollar amount that we're looking to spend.
Oh, so it was an add-on after. Okay.
Correct.
And you're not gonna be any problem with costs going up. We're gonna get on this right away, and it's not, we're not gonna get hit with some more costs later on.
The, the way that we will bid this, we will bid it on a street-by-street basis so that depending on what the costs come in at, we'll be able to remove possible streets if we have to, or depending on what the costs come in at, we could also possibly add streets to it.
Great. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Tracy.
D, B, A, C.
Counselor Hartman.
I had C, D, A, B.
Counselor Todd.
I also had C, D, A, B, and it sounds like we may be all thinking similarly by going after the most expensive ones first, because with construction costs, it's never gonna be cheaper than it is today. So.
Counselor Garlington.
I am also C. I would also like to add that I, on top of what Counselor Todd said.
I apologize. Did you get my vote?
C, D.
C, D, A, B. And I would also like to add that I was looking at what repairs needed to be done and hope that repairs, as many repairs as possible was in whatever one we chose. And I would have liked to have moved a few lines around, but I got an email today that said I couldn't do that. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, and I am C, A, D, B. Okay, so it looks like C is, C it is.
That's fantastic. Thank you all very much. Our Public Works Director is gonna put together a scope of work. We'll go out to bid and bring the contract back for the City Council to approve.
All right. Do we have any business carried forward?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. So next is business from the audience. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input of our citizens into consideration. However, in order to comply with Oregon public meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but instead of time for us to listen. Our city administrator and clerk are taking notes in case an item requires further action. Tammy called the first.
First, we have Ciara Cook.
Hello, Council and Mayor. I'm speaking tonight because I have serious concerns about the leadership of our city. For the past several years, the mayor has led attacks on sitting councilors and council candidates who she receives as a threat to her voting block. The mayor's relentless personal attacks create a hostile climate and allow the business of the city to be overrun by inviting and drama. When the mayor's most recent attempt to bully Counselor Tracy out of his seat was unsuccessful, the mayor's friend, Counselor Alexander, called for a motion to deem Counselor Tracy's seat vacant against the advice of City Attorney. After being warned by the City Attorney that forcing Tracy, Tracy out of his seat was unlawful and would risk putting the city in a position of losing a lawsuit, Alexander determined that he wanted to move forward with pushing Tracy out of his seat anyway. Last meeting, this council recognized its dysfunction and voted to hold a work session with a moderator to learn to set aside their personal grievances and get back to the work of the city. Any hopes citizens may have had that this would work was quickly proven wrong, however, when the mediator hired by the city failed to get the cooperation of the mayor. When meeting with the mediator, Mayor Stumpel stated that she would not rest until she sees Counselor Tracy removed from his office and would not cooperate with a mediated session despite her public vote in favor. This is another example of the mayor saying one thing publicly, then acting with malice when she thinks no one is looking. The mayor and Counselor Alexander are determined to throw Counselor Tracy out of his seat, regardless of the rule of law or the will of Gladstone citizens. They are willing to put all of our tax dollars at risk for a petty grudge. As we've learned from the City Attorney, if they are successful in their unlawful removal of Counselor Tracy, they would put the city at risk of being sued. The cost of losing such a lawsuit would have to come out of city coffers, resulting in increased taxes or reduced services for city residents. How much will our taxes go up, Mayor and Counselor Alexander, if the city has to pay a large settlement because you're unwilling to follow council's legal advice? What city services would we have to cut to pay for your unlawful attacks on a fellow counselor? In addition to all of the unethical and potentially illegal behavior that is established public knowledge, I'm hearing concerning rumors from my neighbors that the mayor is meeting with councilors in her voting block in secret forum meetings. I've also heard that the mayor and her voting block have already determined that if a council seat is vacated, they intend to appoint Bill Osborne to the seat. I haven't seen proof of these allegations, but I'm concerned that the behavior of the mayor and certain council members are so inappropriate that these actions would be consistent with their behavior. Mayor Stumpel, Counselor Alexander, please stop this unethical and inappropriate behavior. If you're unable to behave in a manner befitting your positions, please resign for the good of the community. I want to thank city staff, the City Attorney, and Councilors Todd, Tracy, and Hartman for persevering through this and serving their city despite the toxic environment that the mayor has allowed to fester. Thank you.
Next.
The next will be coming on via Zoom, and it will be Kelly Chaney.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know I'm being timed, so I'll try to go quickly. I first wanted to talk about the, the legal concerns I had from the last meeting. I heard Ciara comment a little bit about this. But when elected officials, when anybody starts saying they're not gonna take legal advice, being a paralegal for thirty years, that, my ears go up. Like, why wouldn't you take legal advice that the taxpayers are paying for? Why would you say you've gone to your own attorneys when an attorney is only as good as the information you give them? So if you cherry pick information and give it to an outside attorney to get the answers you want, that's not good legal advice. Chad has sat there month after month after month through this garbage. He knows the truth. He doesn't have any skin in the game. He's giving us good legal advice. And if there is a rogue group that goes against this, they should be held personally and individually liable for anything the city has to pay because of their actions, because they are not meeting their fiduciary duty to us by, by not taking legal advice. And it's funny, see, this, this is a small town, guys. Ciara's mentioning these secret meetings. I, I, I think that might have came from me. She said she doesn't have proof. Well, here's the proof. After these meetings, I'm in my slippers. One time I was even in my pajamas, don't tell anybody, and I go to my mailbox, or I walk my dog, and my, my mailbox is like twenty-five, less than twenty-five yards from Greg's front door. And I see the mayor immediately pull up after the meeting, after she's voted one way, and they go into a meeting. I saw Bill Osborne's car there with them one night for hours and hours, when there's this idea that there's no, nothing, nothing going on. And it's just, it's crap. It's not some secret spy thing. It's not some creepy stocking. I'm going to my mailbox, and I see it all the time. And it's gotta stop. All I've heard is this transparency, transparency, when you go to the, when you go to the paper, when you give things to Bill Osborne, when you let him post things, and you guys talk transparency, transparency, but then you immediately do this sleazy stuff on the side, and I, I don't understand it. This statement at the beginning of the meeting, how you've gotta do what's right, and you've gotta do what the law says, and it doesn't matter what your personal opinion, why do you even say that, you guys? It's, it's not even what's happening. And I, I hate to even say this because it was a productive meeting. You guys got down to business, but I know after these business meetings, I see cars over at Greg's house immediately afterward. So if you have something to say, say it now so that people can hear it. Be transparent like you say you are, and just put it all out on the table, and don't be a bunch of sneaky little peats.
Next is in-person Ginger Zimpbaum.
So I really just came here to thank Jackie Betts for her service to our community and the job that she does here for the city despite everything that, all the roadblocks that are always set in front of you, at least it seems as an outsider looking in, who's been watching these meetings for the past two years. It seems that there is a lot of chaos and a lot of things that impede your ability to run the city, and yet I see you running it beautifully, and you really are doing a phenomenal job. And I thank you on behalf of the residents of Gladstone for the work that you do. So thank you for that. I'm touching base a bit on these rumors. I want you all to just be aware of the optics that are going on. I've done a lot of networking and talking with leaders in our neighboring cities, and unfortunately, I've even heard rumors that you guys are having secret meetings and plotting strategy for how to take down Counselor Tracy, and I've been hearing it from leaders in other cities that there has been talk. You know, and at first, when I was hearing it, I've heard it from a couple of residents here in Gladstone. There is a couple down at the park that I was talking to one day. who were just chit chatting and talking about city issues. And they let me know that. They didn't realize what they were telling me, but they spoke with one of you. And some of the stuff was shared with them, and they shared it with me, talking about Matt Tracy, things that they heard from one of you. And the first time that I heard most recently about a forum meeting came from a person who lives in Happy Valley, who was at a Republican event and overheard it, and it was being kind of circulated as a source of discussion. Whether or not these things are actually happening, I have no idea. But the optics are out there. Whatever it is you are doing, it's not looking the way it should. And I'm asking all of council to please consider that going forward. We voted you into office to serve a job. Um, and when you are more preoccupied with personal agendas, then you are serving the people of Gladstone. And when you are focused on silencing the voice of the people through the representative that they voted into office, that is a problem, and it's not democratic. So please consider that. Thank you for your time.
Next is Vanessa Huckabee.
Mayor and councilors, the community has been watching the new council in hopes of progress. But instead, what they see is a few councilors flailing for control. Many of us have been approached in recent months to support recall petitions for various council members, but most notably the mayor. When we ask why, we are told that the egos have gotten in the way of their position. We've been told they are in collusion by way of selective meetings they continue to have. We've been told they are getting rid of staff so they can control their replacements. We've been told they can't make decisions because each councillor believes they personally run the city, when in fact they are a collective group that sets policy. The city administrator and staff manages the city. I could go on, but I think you all get the picture. I want to believe that none of this is true, so we are asking you to please change this perception. Allow the city to heal from decades of stagnation and provide a smooth, seamless, cohesive path forward. You do not work for yourselves, but work for us. So please consider this in all of your decisions. Moving forward, what you want needs to be taken off the table and replaced with what we want, what supports and connects our community. Only that will move the city forward. These are words almost verbatim spoken by Tammy Stumpel on January 9, 2015. So I ask you, Mayor, are you a woman of your word, or do they only hold true when it is meant to benefit you? I would also like to say thank you to Administrator Betts and city staff for their continued efforts to manage the city, all while being subjected to a toxic work environment. Also, thank you to City Councillor, Council Chad Jacobs for continuing to be the voice of logic and reason. Your efforts do not go unnoticed by the community. Thank you.
Next is Angela Riley.
Hi. Mayor Stumpel has effectively obstructed her own council from a conflict resolution session they voted for. Going public with her intentions when stated to L B Day that she would not rest until Matt Tracy was removed from council. His firm had to resign the project based on this, denying them and us a way forward. Instead of bridging, she's destroying. By coming out with your true intentions, the opposite of leading council to a reconciliation, you've disrespected your council and your position. You are the common denominator in Gladstone's troubles. One of your allies tried to cover it up and attack those who didn't agree to concealing the email, which is public information. When you try to hide this with a platform of government transparency that you ran on, that's astoundingly hypocritical. Continuing to weaponize information is tearing apart this town instead of building it up. Until we have a new mayor and a cohesive council that works together and supports each other instead of attacking, we'll see no end to this warfare leadership. It gets more gross every month. For the good of Gladstone, we need better. We need you to do better. Thank you.
Last is Jerry Blakeney.
Oh, this is exciting, huh? It's good to see you all in person. Tammy, it's good to see your face. I suppose you'll probably start writing in a few minutes. I was going to say that the same thing that Vanessa already did, but she already beat me to it, and she probably did a better job than I was going to do. So now you just get improv. It's going to be fun. Greg, I know you don't want to listen to Attorney Jacobs, but you should watch his face when he sits through your bullshit. Because it's like, nothing's happening. Whereas when people come up here and talk to you, they're elected representative. I don't know, you like, I got a tickle? You're up there giggling up there like crazy. And quite frankly, it's embarrassing. A grown man, grown person, sitting up there giggling away. It's embarrassing to you and the city and the people who voted for you, all 88 cities or 42 friends that you talked to or whatever. Tammy. I was going to read your words because I do think that they are poignant. Right now, the only group that I see flailing up here for power is your voting block. Just so that we're clear, that's Greg Alexander, yourself, you're the leader of it. I'm really on the fence with you, Mindy, because sometimes you're really great. Sometimes it seems like you're actually here for the city and using your own words and your own mind. But then there's that time when it seems like you're just parroting Tammy's stuff. And I was really on the fence with you, Randy. At first, I didn't like you, and then you kind of like made some sense. And I was like, that's cool. He's a guy who actually cares about the city. Then you went on those crazy rants, and you know how I stand on those, so I'll leave it alone. But seriously, you all are adults. You're leaders in this city. The fact that people come up here and ask you to behave with the respect that you deserve, that we deserve, is embarrassing. Right? Like, sad, just really, really sad. Clean up the act. Stop following or, I don't know, parroting? Pay attention to your constituents, Madam Mayor. It's it's embarrassing that you never look at the people that talk to you. That's it. I hope you all have a great evening. I wanted to thank Attorney Jacobs, Administrator Betts, Matt Tracy, Vanessa Hartman, and Tracy Todd for actually being adults, being responsible elected officials. I'd love to thank you, Randy Ripley. Come over to the, what, good side again? Mindy, I don't know. Let's just stop following the bullshit and behave. Thank you. Have a good night. I told you Vanessa was going to do better.
That was the last one, correct?
Yeah, that was it.
Mindy Garland here. So I am going to talk about the fact that art, an email that I received from the city that was confidential in, that that I deemed confidential. This is my opinion. I got a letter from, everybody knows what happened. We got a letter that said that we were going to have these 45 minute conversations. We were to fill out the paperwork for when our time was. And then we were going to have the conversations with Mr. Day. I miss Mr. Day. And I've never met the gentleman. I'll admit that right now. So my my conversation never happened. We got an email. And so in that, so I'm sorry, let me back up just a little bit. In that letter, it was stated that our conversations with Mr. Day were confidential. Okay, does everybody understand what the word confidential means? In my opinion, and in my heart, had I talked to him and offered maybe suggestions or ways that we could have fixed, moved forward, maybe not fixed, but moved forward, and he would have spilled that and somebody would have sent that out. I mean, why not just break into my house and steal half my house? You you, you know, to me, that tears apart my heart a little bit. I have, don't shake your head at me. I have a conscience. And handing out things that are confidential, I'm sorry, is wrong. So when I read that it had been leaked out, and then what I perceived as a joke that it got sent out in that, well, you know how the rumor mill works and and other things were in there, I thought, okay, well, that's not fixing things either. That wasn't allowing us to come back together and saying, okay, well, clearly this isn't going to work, but let's go to Plan B. You know? Because that's the way I do things. You work at it till it gets fixed. One of the reasons, I guess, I've been married 40 years. So in saying that, I just want everyone to know that I felt that that email was confidential. And I felt that sending it out was the judgment call, I'm sorry, Counselor Todd, was so wrong, in my opinion, that I was embarrassed for our whole council. And I understand that that what our mayor may or may not have said to Mr. Day was not what we all wanted to hear. In fact, it wasn't very cooperative at all. But that doesn't mean that it was everybody's business, because it was told it was going to be confidential. Again, would somebody like me to get out of dictionary? So I would like to have a conversation about it. And I'm not sure how we're going to move forward with it. I would just like the conversation to be with the council. And I have a couple of other things to bring up, but I would like to give other people a chance to weigh in on this and how they feel about it, because I feel like it's a kind of a precedence. You know? If you tell me something in confidence, I will keep it in confidence. But this is not what happened. So as a council, where does that, you know, I just need, I guess I need to know the expectation. So is the expectation that everything that I say, everything that I do, everything that we discuss in an executive session is now public knowledge? Because just tell me that. I just need to know that. So that I have the expectation that nothing that I say is private. And not private meaning with the city, but a contract that we talk about in executive session, a an employee's contract, you know, rating somebody's job, any of that. If it's not going to be confidential, just tell me that expectation, because that's just what I need to know. That's all on that. I did. Would you like to hear them?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the Clackamas County Library Board has met to discuss their budget, and it's a good budget. And we're going, and so we had kind of a side meeting. It was sent out to the public that we were going to have the meeting, so it wasn't, you know, anything that couldn't have been discussed. Anyway, and then we're going to discuss it on April 21. So it does have to do with the Gladstone Library and the Concord Library, which are part of Clackamas County Library. So that is April 21 at 5:30. We are meeting Zoom, so if anybody wants to chime in on that, it's generally a lively discussion. The Friends of Gladstone Nature Park is having a plant sale at the park on Saturday, April 30. Also, the park will, at the park, will be the Historical Society with the manual, the books that they've written to sell. And the Clackamas County Seed Library will be there, so you can get, I don't know, I've never looked at it, but I hear it's a pretty robust. I don't know how much of it they're going to bring, but they're pretty excited to be there also. And then the library, the Gladstone Library Foundation will be there with their vegetable starts. So normally, they sell those on the outside of the library sometime, you know, later, I think in May, but they're going to be with us also. So that's all happening at the nature park on Saturday, April 30. Um, I'm sorry. 10 to 2. And and our parking lot's bigger. Thank you, Mr. Cana Peroli and Public Works. It's a much bigger parking lot, so we'll have parking there. There's parking at the Adventist parking lot across the street. And there will be people there directing traffic so that nobody gets hurt. So I'd also like to finally say a very happy Easter and Easter blessings to everyone. And because it falls before our next council meeting that we get to say anything out loud, I would also like to say a very happy, sent out a very happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. And that's, I'm sorry? And Passover. Yes, ma'am. That's all right.
All right, Counselor Hartman. Thank you, Mayor. Updates on the childcare for all workforce work groups. We're still meeting, and this is through the county. They are looking for input from parents and caregivers. You don't have to have an elected position or be anywhere. They accept any and all folks who would like to see Clackamas County adopt a childcare for all structure. And just as a reminder, there are four work groups that you can join. So there's a program and policy, finance strategy, which is an interesting one. We got updates that just in a preliminary cost is going to cost about $1 billion. So that's exciting. Infrastructure and zoning and workforce. And you can feel free to reach out to me, and I can direct you to the right person to sign up for that. I wanted to share an interaction that I had this past week, and I sort of touched on it before with a neighbor who was dealing with the stresses of replacing their sewer water line. I also had the opportunity to speak with the workers that completed the job, and I was surprised to learn that on property is Clackamas County and on the road is Gladstone. And they mentioned that coming to Gladstone is always challenging because we lack the same standards. Now, I'm not an expert in this field at all, and I will tread lightly on their opinions because it's their opinions. But what I found interesting is the amount of knowledge that they have about our infrastructure and how it is failing and how we as a city have failed to take care of our infrastructure. And I know that none of us have had control over that, what previous administrations have done. But to me, I would assume that they are not alone, and there's hundreds of individuals in this city that face the same problem, and we're talking anywhere from $10,000 to $40,000 that they will then have to, you know, put forth to fix issues that were not set by the city. I I think we can all acknowledge that this is one of our most largest issues and most pressing, and it has the potential to be catastrophic for our budget in the future. And to me, this is what we should be focusing on. We had a fantastic meeting, which I came into it thinking, wow, this is going to be a lot of great discussion. There's a lot of very controversial things happening, but we did it as a council together. We all have different opinions. We were elected to govern the city and and move it forward. And I want to make it very clear to everyone listening and everyone here and everyone sitting up here that personally, I want to do nothing with the continued vitriol that we have all seen. This time, two years ago, I knew not a single person in this room or up here. And then I got involved, and you hear the stories of the drama. We have our kumbaya moments. We said we're going to put it on water under the bridge. We're going to move forward. And yet we continue to go back to square one. And for me, to answer your question, just to give my thought on this, we received on your question about whether it's confidential or not. When I decided to jump into politics, I was told, don't do anything that you don't want to read about in the newspaper. And nothing is confidential, nothing is private, and that's how I try to behave. I have learned over the past year, learned from a lot of my mistakes. And I think in this case, I find it interesting that we're focusing on what Counselor Todd did rather than what was said. And we all had the hopes that we could have a conversation about moving forward. And people say things when they're in front of people, when they're on record, and then behind closed doors, it's a completely different opinion. And that's what I find interesting, because I want, I don't want to, I don't want to do this anymore. I don't want to fight anymore. And that's what I find interesting, because I want, I don't want to, I don't want to do this anymore. I don't want to fight anymore. We were elected to push this city forward. And I would hope that everyone would agree. Everyone sitting up here says they love this city so much, and they want to move Gladstone into a better place. But it is hard to believe sometimes when we continue to see things in the newspaper, we continue to hear these disgusting rumors. And I do want to make something very clear. When I am not here, and with all due respect to each and every one of you, I don't think about you guys. I think about my community. I think about my family. I think about childcare and that people can't get back to work. I think about our infrastructure. I think about how I two oh five is going to affect our communities. That's what we need to be talking about. Not whether or not I don't like you, or you don't like her, or whatever that may be. We're not here to govern each other. We're here to govern the city. And I really, really hope that we can move forward in good faith because I think it's beautiful that we each represent a section of this city. Someone who's comfortable talking to Counselor Garlington might not be comfortable talking to me, and that's totally fine. That's the beauty of this. But we represent seven different parts of this community. And we're able to have really constructive conversation around policy that should be really controversial. And we, we can come to a nice agreement and we can work together. And so I hope that moving forward, we can move in forward in good faith. And, and if you can't, if you want to continue the fights, then I do suggest to step down and continue that fight as a private citizen and let those who want to govern the city govern the city. So that is all I have for today, and I hope that we can move forward and no longer have to deal with this drama.
Thank you, Counselor Todd.
Well, that was very well said. Thank you very much, Counselor Hartman. And Mindy, I'm sorry that you're upset with my action of passing along, which was a public document. It was a public document being given, shared to the public. At the end of the day, that's what it was. You found out about us not moving forward with the project in an email. I found out about it because I was on the phone with LB Day because it was my time to call. I was, I believe I found out before our city administrator found out. So it was never confidential because he point blank told me why we weren't moving forward. I didn't disseminate that information because I would take editorializing what I thought had happened. I asked for that email. I asked for a report of just why, because any one of you, had you gotten a phone call that said, I talked to Counselor Hartman. I talked to Counselor Tracy. And I'm going to resign from this project, and I'm really sorry. But after speaking to Counselor Todd, I couldn't move forward anymore because there's no hope for this council. That actually broke my heart. I actually felt like I was kicked in the stomach because it was almost like this person who is an expert in his field, an expert in facilitation, saw what we all see. We're broken. And then it's like going, I guess I've never really done this, but you know, like going to couples counseling and hearing that you're all in, you're all ready to talk about it, wanting to work about it, do something to make it better. And the other person's saying, yeah, 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 I want to go too, but I'm not going to do the work. I'm not going to, I'm not going to engage. It broke my heart. People knew about that because they knew I was going to talk to LB Day. I'd already discussed that. So when all of a sudden I'm talking to him on the phone, I'm like, holy crap, what happened? And I think we all deserve to know why we aren't moving forward with the facilitation. I, so I'm not going to, I don't feel bad about it. Of course, it was probably embarrassing because it is embarrassing. But I'm not going to apologize for passing along a public document. I checked beforehand and I checked after. I checked several times if that was a public document. I would have never shared it with anybody if it was confidential. I don't roll that way. I don't talk about executive sessions. I don't talk about top contracts. I don't. I wouldn't have done that, and it wouldn't have gotten out because I know you're not supposed to. That was not a confidential document. Not in my opinion, legally, it was not a confidential document. So I'm sorry that you're upset with me. I feel like we had a great meeting tonight. But I would also like to get past this BS and just get to work, and I don't know what that's going to take. I don't. Our, our community's sick of it. I have a countdown on my calendar, how many more days I have on. We need to figure out, if you want to have a discussion about it, let's have a discussion about it, but we're going to have to have some facilitation, I'm guessing, and we can't find one that will engage with us. We have a bad reputation, and we need to all look deep and figure out how we're going to build that reputation up again. And I hope we can, and I hope everybody comes to the most fun five seconds of childhood memories at the Easter egg. The Easter egg hunt at eleven AM on Saturday. Lots of, lots of memories with myself and my children doing that, but I just, it's forty two, I think it's five. Oh, and the pancake breakfast too. Yes, I love, I love pancakes. So everybody come to that as well. So. But thank you for voicing what you had to say, and thank you for listening to me.
Counselor Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to start off with giving my sincere thanks to the folks who are taking the time to make comments, taking the time to follow this council. I've been here almost five years, and this has never stopped over the five years. As many times as I've tried to work in concert with mayor and other counselors on this council, they always want to find a way to come at me. And they have at times. Coming after my work, that was, that was a fascinating move on their part, or folks who are associated with them, that, that got kind of old really fast. I agree with the council. The other counselors who are speaking about going forward in a progressive manner and to, to actually bring progress to the city, I, I believe in that and I agree with it. This mayor who sits to my left, when I was appointed to this council, she was seethingly angry behind me, hissing at Counselor Nice about how the vote went, which immediately indicated to me that I had basically walked into a non-transparent, potentially corrupt city council. The vote had been set, but the vote had been reversed by the other city counselors who didn't want to do the mayor's bidding. That is a fact, a fact supported by video and audio evidence of that particular meeting. That's the first time I met anybody in this town associated with the city. So for five years, almost five years, it'll be five years coming up in July. It's been progressive, like constant wrangling disagreements over some very, very volatile social issues. And I think that we had a lot of folks, you know, many folks who attended the rally who were asking where the mayor was when she walked away after basically dismissing that group. That was probably the triggering moment for the mayor. The fact of the matter is, I don't have really any opinion of the mayor prior to twenty seventeen. But I certainly do now. And I've tried to actually work in concert with the council to progressively go forward, fix our infrastructure, work so that our kids are safe, make sure that we have, you know, usable streets, sewer systems, water systems, et cetera, et cetera. We, we are basically, and I'm going to use the term victim, and I don't like the term at all, victims of another administration who for approximately thirty plus years had no renewal and repair program, did not have construction standards, did not have many of the things that a city that's going to be successful in a vital, in a vital city, vitality, a city that has vitality, those systems were in place because they deferred the taxation and the rates, kicked the can down the road, and here's where we sit. So we have the opportunity, we've always had the opportunity to cooperate and work. But this is not what certain leaders in this city want. Certain leaders in this city are more interested in their own agendas. And if they're slighted by somebody else, it becomes a personnel problem with that person. It's a trait. And it's a psychological trait, and I'm not going to mention it. But many of us who have maybe picked up a book or two, understand what that trait is. I've always wanted to go forward. I've tried to to basically hand over the, the olive branch a few times. And since twenty twenty, this has been nothing but a battle and a nightmare. Now, everybody appears, well, this is a great meeting. You know what? It's not a great meeting for me until I walk out the door or I turn off the Zoom, because every single meeting, at the end of the meeting, there's the surprise. Let's take another swipe at him and see if it's going to stick. It's tiring. And it's got to be damn tiring for the citizens of this town. So I appreciate all the citizens stepping up, and I appreciate everybody who's spoken on my behalf, and I certainly appreciate, and many of you, I don't know. Vanessa, I've never met you. I appreciate that. Thank you. You folks are going to hold us responsible. I will, people say never say never. I'm saying never. I'm not running for another seat in this town. But you folks who are here, you're going to hold the people up here responsible. And I hope that you're all out there working, you're, you know, working yourselves to the, to the bone, trying to make sure that you elect the people who you want in this position to make, to represent you and make these important decisions. That's what we do. That's all we should do. When we all were, were sitting down with John Morgan during one of our, basically it was a team building exercise, his question to everybody up here, what's your job? Your job is to make a decision. That's what a politician does. That's what a city council does. That's what anyone who's in this position does. That's all we should be doing. Working with our community and making decisions. So try to leave it on a good note. Hopefully, we won't have any surprise at the end of the meeting. But there's no guarantee there. Quite frankly, I'm used to it. I appreciate everybody here, and I doubly appreciate the staff. They have put up with so much that you folks don't even know about. So, you know, thank you, and thank you to our citizens and the folks that are supporting me, and thank you to the folks that are supporting the other folks that are sitting up here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I really wasn't going to say anything, but after the after listening to people, I'm going to make a few comments. You didn't mention my car at Greg's house because it's only been there once, because normally I walk. I walk all over this town. I like to walk. I walk to work every day. And so some of the meetings that you guys think we were talking about, Matt, we're actually talking about what it would look like if we tried to rebuild the volunteer fire department. Those were the majority of the meetings that I was at, probably six or seven of them in the last six months. That's all we talked about. The last time when I was actually at Greg's house with Tammy, Battalion Chief from Lake Oswego came down because he wanted to look at the budget for the fire department. And he had a lot of questions. He had a lot of really good comments about it. So don't assume that just because people are getting together, that they're always talking about somebody. And the other thing, which this could be kind of hard to know if I'm there because I walk most places. Go knock on their door. If you have elected officials getting together, knock on their door and say, hey, can I get in on your conversation? They'll more than likely encourage you to come in because they're going to want to hear your input. So on that note, that's all I got to say. And like Matt, when my term's up, my house is going for sale, and you guys will never see me in this town again. Because this has been, and I've said this multiple times, this has been the most dysfunctional thing I've done in my life.
Counselor Alexander.
I'm going to go off subject for a minute here. I've been reaching out to all the churches in our area, or like when we had the ice storm and, and to build, you know, community with them. And so I've talked to every church. I've got every pastor's name, their number and their contacts. And what we came up with an idea we thought would be good is, after the Pledge of Allegiance at each meeting, I got twelve pastors that are all Gladstone Church pastors. And they would like to, after our Pledge of Allegiance, say a prayer. You know, I don't know if it can heal or start the healing, or, you know, it can't hurt. So, you know, you can laugh. I don't know. You don't believe in it. Great, that's fine. But a lot of this is a faith-based community. So I'd like to make a motion that we get a schedule and let these pastors come in so they can connect with the community in a way of prayer before each meeting after our Pledge of Allegiance.
We want to invite the rabbis as well, I would assume.
Of course.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see where their, their place was in Gladstone. I didn't. There's all, there's the list I got.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. We'll have a conversation. We'll have a discussion. There's a motion.
I think you have a lot to discuss on this one.
I'll entertain a discussion. I'll second it.
Mayor, if I could interject. While you can certainly add things to the agenda, your council rules basically say that if you're going to have a major policy discussion, it should really be, go to the next meeting so people can have notice. So while you can certainly have a discussion tonight, I would encourage you not to actually vote on a motion tonight and move it to your next agenda inconsistent with your council rules.
Oh wait, yeah, we have to. I mean, that's the council rules. Sure. So then what I will say is, you know, we, we hear all this talk about everybody wanting to be this and that, and then we hear people come up and, and speak about, they assume, they accuse, like counselors that we got the whole council right here. Have I been with any three of you at one time? Has there been a quorum? So these are just accusations and assumptions that get put on social media and then get regurgitated by the same little group. That's exactly what goes on here. So I don't appreciate that.
Community members, they're, they're not the same little group. They're community members.
Well, you, you call them community members, like you, you said interested community members that you sent that email to right away. And then you say community, right here, I got it here.
I know you do. You usually do have all of them right there.
No, I got, I got your email.
I know.
That says that the community members are coming to, let's see how she put it. I suggest that, at least for appearance sake, you refrain from those friendly get togethers at your home in the future. They're being noticed by our community. So does our community drive by my house and then let Counselor Todd know exactly what they think's going on? Nobody's knocked on my door. Oh, they do? Well, nobody's knocked on my door. I've never had more than three counselors in there. So I don't know, you know, these are just assumptions that you do, and then you get them out on social media like you like to do. And then you get them all going, and then people want to know why there's division and distrust. Well, there's one of them right there, you know, my, my house is being watched.
I asked you if you knew the definition of a serial meeting.
I don't know the definition. I got, I took the picture. I have proof.
Not unless it's a serial meeting, that was a quorum. Do you know the difference between a serial meeting and a quorum?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you tell me what it is?
I don't need to explain it to you. Do you know?
Yeah, I do know.
Okay, well, I'm not doing any of them, but you just.
You can't talk to the same people about the same subject. It doesn't matter if they're not all there at the same time.
And these are people, these are people telling you things. You just believe anything you hear? I mean, is that what you all do? I just, they said it, it's got to be true. I mean, show me some proof. That's all I got to do.
Here's some proof, Counselor Alexander. So there's an email that I saw where you actually talked about having four votes.
No, 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 it's wrong.
Yeah, actually.
No, you're, I'm telling you, I said, I asked a question. Does it take four votes? And I'll explain to you like I did to Counselor Todd. On a, on a council of seven, four is the majority, Matt. So it takes four votes. I didn't say majority. I said four votes. I used the wrong wording.
Okay.
To like, like tonight to do a motion. It was about this motion. So can, can this motion?
Well, I don't know if we share the email because I'm sure it's a confidential email. I'm just saying that the way that the email read, it certainly, it certainly looked like you had been involved in talking to folks and getting the votes.
That's your guys, again, that's your guys.
I need to weigh in that you asking about the four votes was not about having pastors speak because you said, does it take four votes to terminate?
Yes.
That's what you.
Contracted or elected officials.
Right.
And then I asked later on to Jackie, does it take four votes to do anything on the council? If someone makes a motion, and then there's a second, and you get four votes, then it's, is that not how the council works?
Majority, that's the quorum.
Well, thank you. That's not a quorum, not if you're not talking to them. I just asked tonight. Nobody knew about this pastor thing. You guys just, you know, if you just would quit assuming and accusing and have some facts, I am on the table. You know, there you go. I, I got mine right here.
You had, so, so here's.
I'm holding them up, ask for them.
So Counselor Alexander, here's some facts. So you say that, and, and Counselor Garlington also says that she'd like the transparency. When Counselor Todd was transparent about the conversation that happened with LB Day, a non-confidential email, now you, 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 Counselor Garlington objected to that. So you're saying on the one hand, lay out the facts and be transparent. On the other hand, you're not really, you're not really.
Let's not mince my words, okay? Do not mince my words. Do not. I'm an educated person. I know.
Mindy, I don't know how your education came into the conversation.
Then why are you questioning what I said?
I didn't question it. I said that you were just, you were not happy about the fact that that information had been passed out.
That is not what I said. What I said, okay, yes, I'm not happy about that. What I said was in that paragraph, there was the word used that our conversations with LB Day would be confidential. So regardless of if LB Day released it, if Jackie released it, if anybody released it, it was wrong.
The details of your verbatim are not what I'm talking about. The fact of the matter is you didn't want the information released. That's what I'm speaking to.
Not that I didn't, no. It's not that I didn't want it released. They said it would not be released.
Okay, thank you. Then I, I'll stand corrected.
Facts.
No, just that. No, just that, just let's present facts, not just assumptions and accusations. And I don't have social media. So I only get told by people, but I don't even listen to them because I don't see it. But that's how, how things like to seem to get spread and distorted and twisted.
All right. Thank you. Um, for me, the food pantry is open from 3:00 to 5:30 on Thursdays at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off Glen Echo. And it's located in the back in the portables. And I want to thank our Public Works Director for putting a sign up that designates the street as Glen Echo because a lot of people were confused and didn't know where to go. Thank you. The number of families and homebound seniors we are serving is growing every week and it is growing in leaps and bounds because of inflation is the only thing that we can think of. It's, it's really sad. If you would like to volunteer drop off donations, let me know. I can connect you with Alex. Our prep crew is there on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 3:30 and it's a perfect time to drop off donations and a lot of people are, and thank you if you're one of those. We need volunteers desperately, so please take time to help others. Um, we are only, we're only doing it two hours a week and with the number of people that we're serving, we really need to do it two days a week or expand our hours. So we really, really would like help. The Parks and Rec Board meeting discussed the status of the Meldrum Bar site plan. We had a parks maintenance update and a discussion on the unified sports user fees. The board expects to go in-person meetings starting in May. The board discussed the Robin Hood Neighborhood Survey and reviewed the Parks and Rec 2022 work plan. They're doing something a little bit unique in that, um, before they do any work plan for new capital projects at a park, they're going to survey the community around that park and get their feedback on what they would like. So they're going to see how it works with Robin Hood and, um, hopefully roll that into other, other neighborhood parks. Um, I committed to finding out if we can get I-205 diversion funds to cover the cost of the 99E pedestrian bike underpass. With the expected exponential increase in traffic due to the I-205 tolling, this intersection is going to be extremely dangerous for pedestrians. So I'm going to try and see if we can get, um, a direct diversion impact fund to take care of that. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, referred to as C4, is focusing on the I-205 tolling issue. And they're really focusing hard on that one, as well as shelters and supportive services. We've submitted another letter to the Oregon Transportation Committee and Metro outlining our concerns with the project. Um, that's all I have. So would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I wasn't done. I don't, I, I have nothing to hide. You want to knock on my door any day to see who's there? Help yourself, anyone out there. Just come do it. You too, Jerry. I want you to come knock on the door. Come in, get to know me even. I don't, never, Matt, you don't know, you don't know half these people talking, but you guys have a lot of opinions about me. So maybe get to know me and then we'll go from there. Then we can disagree, huh? How about that? Thanks.
Would someone?
No, no.
Would someone make a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Hartman to adjourn. Any further discussion? Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Counselor Todd.
Aye.
Counselor Garlington.
Aye.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, meeting's adjourned at, I'm sorry, I can't see that far, 8:45. Thank you.